Beginning with tonight, I'm Connie Beard. I am chairman of McLean County Republicans and we're here tonight to listen to what I really personally consider some of the most important candidates that you're going to hear and consider in this upcoming election, and that's our school board candidates. All of these people are willing to dedicate their time, energy, and talent for the betterment of our students, and I can't think of any higher calling than that. So I'm just delighted that we are having this turnout of candidates willing to speak on their own behalf and speak to questions that the listeners will have as we go through this evening. The format will be as follows. We've already drawn speaking order. We're going to start with our Unit 5 school candidates and then move into District 87 school candidates. So you can have an opportunity to listen to the candidates introduce themselves first. They've already drawn a speaking order. So they'll, as I call upon them, they'll have a, I've given them a three-minute timeline for each of them to give themselves an introduction, speak to what they hope to do as a school board member, and then at the same time, I'm encouraging those of you that are in attendance as viewers to look on your screen, you'll see a Q and A button on your screen. You can type in a question that you might have for any of the school board candidates. I would prefer maybe you coming up with questions that could be a good cross-the-board question that all of the candidates can each then have an opportunity to address. Once we have gone through the question period, then we will go to a final closing period where each of the candidates will have a minute to recap and share any last-minute ideas or thoughts they would like to leave as a parting word. It will be in the reverse order of the way we did to start with, in hopes of trying to be as fair as we can, giving everybody a good, good opportunity to share what's on their heart and in their vision and their dream about serving on the school board. So I've said enough, I'm going to move it to our first school board candidate for Unit 5 schools, and the first one of the draw was Kintreka. Kintreka, would you come to the mic and you can unmute yourself and tell us about your, your vision of serving on the board?
Awesome, thank you Connie. Good evening, everyone. Special thank you to everyone that came out this evening. My name is Kintreka Coleman. I have been a resident of Bloomington Normal for 23 years. I am a native of Alabama, but I grew up in Louisiana. I'm married, have four children, Brianna, Victoria, Mikey, and Jeremy. All of my four children have had the opportunity to be a part of the Unit 5 experience, and I have two that are still a part of Normal Community as well as Evans Junior High. I'm a little bit more about me. Growing up, I was nurtured in a public school system with great educators, office staff, and administrators that I remember so vividly today. From the band teacher who saw my love for music and leadership potential, I led my band as drum major during high school and junior high, to the principal who treated us to McDonald's every quarter when we made the honor roll, inspired me to keep working hard. From the custodian that said, "You got this," gave me the confidence I needed when I walked through the halls, and to the math teacher that opened her room during lunch to do problems, inspired me to share this love of the topic through tutoring. And the guidance council who sat with me to discuss my next phase of life, all while ensuring I completed college and scholarship applications. I received my Bachelor of Science in Computer Science from Loyola University, New Orleans, and today I serve as a technology manager in data at State Farm. As you can see, educators, administrators, family, community played a huge part in a young girl's life, whose mom had her at the age of 16. Her grandmother passed away before she was born, and her grandfather passed away the year after she was born, and her father enlisted in the military. That little girl was me, with my circumstances, the village made a difference for me. I tell this story because your presence here this evening means so much to students like me. I stand on that foundation as well as the reason I serve my community and why I want to run for the Unit 5 school board. I have been an active member of parent-teacher organizations and booster clubs since my children started daycare. I've held office as PTO president and currently serve as PTO treasurer. I am an active representative of Citizens Advisory Council, and I've had the opportunity to provide thought partnership to core issues that impact our students. This work has inspired me to focus on strengthening engagement across caretakers, community educators, ensuring equity for all students, students and staff, and supporting educational excellence. Core skills and talents that I look to bring to this role is leadership, strong community connection, recruitment and hiring, diverse experience and perspectives. So I ask you today for your support and confidence in my ability to serve as a representative and a strong advocate within this district. I ask you for your vote on April 6th or before. Thank you so much again for being here.
Thank you, Kintreka. Okay, spot number two was landed with Jeremy. Jeremy, would you unmute your microphone and then come to the mic, please?
Thank you so much Connie, and thank you for the opportunity to chat with the folks here this evening. My name is Jeremy Dehigh. I grew up, a little background on me, I grew up in Lafayette, Indiana, about two hours east of here. Upon graduation from high school, I went to the U.S. Merchant Marine Academy, a federal military academy, and upon graduation, I served in the U.S. Naval Reserves for 10 years. I bring that up because I think that the training and the experience I gained in the military is critical and will serve me well on the school board. In the military, if any of you all have been involved with that, you have to work together as a team and focus on the mission. You know, you can't just be individuals in the military. It's got to be very uniform and focus on what the purpose and the function of what you're doing. So that, that background in the military is going to serve me well on the school board in working with the other six candidates or the other six board members that I'll have to work with on getting things done for the school district. Upon graduation, as I said, I was in the Naval Reserves. I met my wife in 1995. We married in 98. Shortly after we married, I took a job in Florida, working for a company that sells water treatment chemicals to manufacturing companies. When we were down there, we had our two daughters. My oldest is now a sophomore at Butler University. My second daughter is senior at Normal Community. Back in 2004, we moved back to, or moved to Bloomington. My wife grew up in the Chicagoland area, and we moved to Bloomington. I transferred with my company at the time and worked out of their decatur office. But we chose to live in Bloomington for a couple of reasons, but one of the primary reasons was the school district. Unit 5, we really were attracted to what it had to offer for students, and we fell over the community of Bloomington as well. We still love, we love the town we live in, we love the school district, and that's, that's why I want to serve, it's part of the reason why I want to, want to serve on the school board. We had our son a few years later, once we moved here, so we've now had, we're on our 15th year of having children in the Unit 5 school district. So very familiar with, with the school board and the school district from a parent's perspective. I continue to work in the water treatment industry. I have worked in sales management roles, regional management roles, handling and managing business units. That also is going to help support me or provide me a background to work on the school board. One of the biggest challenges that face the school board is going to be financially going forward, our state budget crisis as it is, and is going to, there's going to be limited resources. I have afraid that they're going to continue to restrict funding going to schools. So the school board is going to have to be very creative and making sure that they're fiscally responsible and keep the district financially stable. So that's something I, again, my background can help me to, to do that. So why I'm running, really, I tell people my platform is pretty simple, students first. I want to focus on every decision I make on the school board is going to be focused on how that impacts the students. Obviously, there's a lot of other folks involved, teachers, administrators, taxpayers, and parents, but I want to focus on the students. That's what the sole purpose of the school district is, to educate the students. So I want to make that my mission is to make sure that every decision I'm involved in is focused on the students first. And then the other reason, or the primary reason that drove me this past year to run for the school board was some of the, obviously, it's been a challenging year for everybody. But the, a good friend of mine is the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club here in town. I just talked with him about some of the kids that maybe are financially, economically challenged or maybe have a single parent that, that, you know, that's an essential worker, they may not be able to have good internet access. There's been a lot of kids left behind, and that just, again, it called me to serve. And I thought, what better way to serve the community than to try to help the children of our community? So that's why I'm running. Like everybody else that's on here, I have a Facebook page set up. I will probably be the only Jeremy Dehigh you're going to find on Facebook. So if you look me up there, you'll, you'll find me. I'd love to hear from you. The other thing I'm asking for is I'd love to hear from people in the community. If I'm elected, I'm, I'm, I'm serving the community, I'm serving the students, so I'd love to hear from folks. So I look forward to chatting with you again this evening, and I'd love to have your support on election, what, a week from today? It's coming up. Thanks so much.
I have to unmute myself and remember to do that. Thank you, Jeremy. We're going to move on to Janelle now, please. Janelle, you've already got your mic unmuted, good for you. Please, tell us about your candidacy.
Thank you so much Connie for setting this up this evening, and thank you all for attending and giving us the opportunity to put some faces behind the names that you're going to see on a ballot coming up in just about a week from now, so if you haven't already voted. I'd like to take a moment just to introduce myself. My name is Janelle Sapar. I know most people struggle with the pronunciation of it, but that's okay, because hopefully this odd spelling will help it stick for you. I am a mother of four children, ranging in ages from 12 to 22, and we've lived in the Unit 5 area since we moved here back in 2007, when my oldest daughter was getting ready to start third grade. She is now getting ready to graduate from the University of Louisville, and after her, each one of my boys had started school through Unit 5 as well. I come to this position not just as a parent and a citizen of Unit 5, but also offer the unique perspective that I am a high school science teacher in neighboring District Unit 11. I've had many opportunities to work with several of the teachers within Unit 5 and gotten to know several of them, especially since I did my student teaching time at Normal Community under the tenure of recent retiree Kathy Barnes. I chose to run for this position because Unit 5 was a huge deciding factor in our family deciding to move into the house that we did. We had many options when we were coming, and the big thing that we looked for was a school district that we wanted to start our children in, and Unit 5 had all the wonderful draws that we wanted. However, Unit 5 has struggled financially since we've been here, and I've looked into it, I'm well aware that they have an excellent cost per student ratio, and still they're struggling, and I believe they're going to need some new perspectives and some creative problem-solving approaches so that in the future, we don't have to make some very difficult decisions that nobody is going to be happy with, like cutting some of the programming we don't want to cut. So it is my hope that I can garner the votes that are necessary to be a part of that team, and once that happens, it is my promise that I will make sure to put not just the current students or my students first in the thought process, but every student from now all the way into the future, so that those kids that are entering kindergarten now, once they're graduated adults and having their own children, will still want to be a part of the Unit 5 experience because the programming is still solid and strong. So as you'll hear from a bunch of people, I am reachable through social media at Janelle Sapar for Unit 5, and I can be found, and have had many conversations with people that have been quite interesting and given me some great perspective. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, but I do hope that to get as many people out to vote as possible, so.
Thank you, Janelle. All right, and now on to our number four spot, which was drawn by Stan. Stan, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before on tonight. My name is Stan Gozier, and I am an actuary at State Farm. My wife, Maria Elena, is a bilingual special education teacher in Unit 5. And we have three children, with our oldest enrolled in kindergarten at Cedar Ridge Elementary. So we have many, many more years ahead of us in Unit 5 district. And my job, I use statistics and predictive analytics to predict, project the future costs associated with an insurance policy in order to determine an appropriate market competitive price. My decisions must be fiscally sound and morally objective as I balance input from numerous stakeholders to achieve my employer's strategic objectives. So as a prospective board member, I intend to employ these same skills on the job. A little bit about me, I was raised in a multicultural steel town in Ohio, where my high school ranked in the highest 5% of most diverse schools in the state. My father was its principal, he was my high school principal, and upon retirement, he was elected to the Board of Education himself. His rapport and dedication to the community left a great impression on me from a young age. We lost him to cancer a little bit over a year ago, but his legacy continues all around me. There are seven public school teachers and administrators in my immediate family, and they span five different districts. So as you may guess, when we gather as a family, at the top of the state of education is the topic of conversation. Last year, in our household, my son was diagnosed with autism, and he has an IEP. He sees the world and functions in it in his own unique way. In many respects, he and I are alike, we have many commonalities, and unfortunately, our abilities and preferences to learn vary significantly. And I noticed this while working daily with him at home as his co-instructor during COVID for kindergarten. I began to see what education looks like through his lens, and as his father, I'm now trying every way I can to educate myself without his academic experiences are going to compare and contrast to mine, because I want to make sure I can be his rock and his advocate. Regardless of ability and background, all students need advocate to realize the full potential of their gifts, and that's why I'm running, to help provide the supports for all children in our district. I consider myself lucky and proud to be a success story of public education, and I owe much of that success to the many mentors I've learned from along the way. In turn, I look to pay it for my communities. In college, I volunteered to help students at the Boys and Girls Club and the Homeless Families Foundation in Columbus, Ohio. And in town here, I've partnered on a fiscal accountability solutions team for United Way of McLean County, and I've also raised funds for the Boys and Girls Club. I'm running for the school board to focus the district's attention to its sole mission of educating each student to achieve personal excellence. Our public schools offer more than just a classroom. They represent an inclusive environment for our children to better understand the world around them, and they lay the foundation upon which the future of our community will be built. I'm asking for the opportunity to work with the district's leadership, faculty, families, and community to develop a shared vision for self-sustaining academic improvement and financial stability. I'm making it my mission to foster a culture of open dialogue across all parties in the district, where information disseminates swiftly and accurately, and where all points of view are respected and considered. As those who work closest to the students, I expect for the voices of our families and teachers to permeate all levels of administration, and for district leadership to continue to look for more ways to encourage differentiated instruction. So I pledge to pursue district policies that establish meaningful modifications to the structure of our elementary education, encourage instruction that reaches each student at their individualized level, and most importantly, allocate revenues efficiently as we recognize post-COVID financial realities. Thank you, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Stan. I'm going to ask now Erica to come up. She had our fifth and last spot in our Unit 5 candidates, so Erica, please unmute your mic and share your heart.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak about our platforms on tonight. Good evening. My name is Erica Ralston. I am married with two children. They both attend Sugar Creek Elementary. One is nine years old in the fourth grade, the other one is three years old in the early learning half-day program. So as you can see, I got a long way to go in Unit 5. We have been here almost six years. I've been coming down here for 20 years. I have a twin brother that has been here for 20 years who owns a barber shop in downtown Bloomington. We both have volunteerism backgrounds, where I serve as the, as a PTO member for Sugar Creek Elementary. I also serve on the council advisory committee for Sugar Creek. I also serve as a member of the Governor's Board for Heartland Head Start here in Bloomington, and I am the chair of a program called Bridge for Hope, where we are in partnership with the mission, Home Sweet Home Mission, to bridge the gap between homeless families as they transition back into the community. So as you can see, I am an active volunteer, and I love to do it because I believe that it's, it's what brings our community together. I believe that, I believe in public education because I attended public schools in Chicago, in the Inglewood area. It was teachers like my English teacher, Ms. Melton, and my mentor, Ms. Pillars, that pushed me to start a mentor program in my sophomore year for incoming freshmen to keep them out of trouble, to keep young girls out of trouble like me. It was Mr. Sacks who told my mom, who worked in an attendance office as a volunteer at the time, that Erica is going to be, I mean, she's bright and she's going to do well. It was encouraging words like that that helped me throughout my education to use my voice and advocate for students and for families over the years. It is my belief that the school board plays a vital role in keeping schools on track by setting policies that impact our students and our teachers, that impact and benefit our students and our teachers. I want to contribute my talents while working with, while working as a team with the board members to ensure that Unit 5 meets the community's expectations. It is my goal to serve as a school board member, as a motivated voice for the students, families, and educators. My strengths as a leader are strong, strong knowledge of families and their needs, solid foundations in relationship-building skills. I have a passion to serve families in this community, and I feel that if we work together, all children can be, can excel academically. I not only want to continue to push those of them that, those students that are selling academically, but I want to offer help and hope to those that are faced with academic challenges by partnering in our, by partnering, partnering with educational services in our community like the Jewel Foundation. If elected as a school board member, I will help to solve district-wide issues such as updating facilities, budget shortfalls, and advancing diversity amongst our staff. I will support and defend all stakeholders involved. I have always been an advocate for my children, and if given the opportunity, I will be an advocate for all children in the unit, as a Unit 5 school board member. I will advocate, and I am asking for your vote and your support on or before April the 6th. Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Erica. We're going to move now to the District 87 school board candidates, and the first draw for that group was Charles. So please, sir, come to the mic and share your vision of serving.
All right, thank you Connie for the opportunity to be here this evening and to speak to, to all the voters. My name is Charles Irwin. I am a candidate for reelection to the District 87 Board of Education. Little bit of background, I'm a McLean County boy, grew up in the Danvers area, farm boy, and left for about 33 years as I pursued a career in public school teaching and administration. And my wife Cindy and I moved back to Bloomington about 15 years ago, so I've been in District 87 for 15 years. We have three grown children and we have seven grandchildren. We're fortunate, they are in the area. I have grandchildren at Unit 5, Leroy, Tri Valley, U-High, and I guess I represent District 87 then. So I'm well-versed here, I guess, with all the schools in the area. I wanted to share that I think it's the duty of our board to provide the youth of our community with the best educational experience possible with the financial resources at our disposal. We want all children to have the opportunity to develop to their, to their fullest potential and to become lifelong learners. I think that's, that's critical. And this goal is enhanced when you have a board of education that is proactive in establishing policies that help to ensure the quality educational programs that we desire for all the students that live in our community. And one of the principles that I followed as a school administrator and also as a, as a board member is that, and has been mentioned before, when you make decisions, it's best always to make those decisions based upon what is best for the student. That has to be a guiding principle, and that kind of sums, sums up my background and my introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. We're going to move now to Elizabeth. I ask you to take your mic off mute and come share.
Good evening, and thank you Connie and everyone in the McLean County Republicans for organizing this event and allowing us to introduce ourselves to all of you. My name is Elizabeth Fox Anvik, and I am running for reelection to the District 87 School Board. I have lived in Bloomington for 23 years and worked for State Farm Insurance Company in the Enterprise Technology Department. Education plays a very large influencer in my life. I am the product of public education, a daughter of educators, wife to an educator, mother to two students in District 87, and friend to many educators. I'm seeking reelection because it's a rewarding and impactful way to serve my community. It's also very important to emulate for my daughters the role of service in giving back to our community. It'd be my honor to continue to serve our community in helping guide one of the most valuable assets Bloomington can boast of, our public education system in District 87. As the first out candidate to be elected in Bloomington, I want to continue to make sure a diverse voice is heard from in decision-making matters. One of the most critical things a school board does is the selection of a superintendent. We are entering that phase for District 87, and I want to be a part of that process. District 87 is a vibrant, diverse district with, which will have high expectations for the new leader, as well as presenting opportunities to grow into an even more extraordinary district. I want to be able to tell all the people of District 87, we picked the best candidate for the job. It is important to me that District 87 continues to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars entrusted to us. I am proud of the efforts that the board has put forth to show the support for the fine arts with the construction of the new music addition at the high school, as well as the development of the multipurpose field at Fred Carlton Field while keeping the tax rate unchanged. District 87 continues to be in the lower one-third of the taxing rates in the local area. We have also upgraded all of our school's havoc and lighting systems to be more energy efficient, which in turn lowers the cost to run our schools. I know this year has brought many challenges and concerns to everyone's education. The efforts, efforts of our teachers and parents have been nothing short of heroic, as well as the work of all the support staff that keeps the schools running and clean. Our students continue to amaze me in their endeavors and in the citizens that they are becoming. I am looking forward to being able to get back into the schools and see the students in their element doing such great things across the board. I am really proud of everyone working collaboratively, especially in my fellow board members, to make District 87 a stellar district. Thank you for the opportunity to address everyone tonight, and I am Elizabeth Fox Anvik, and ask for your support, honor before April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And now Bridgette, would you please come and share?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks so much for your invitation to introduce myself as a candidate for the District 87 School Board. My name is Bridgette Gibson, and I am married. I've got two amazing sons, one of which is a graduate, graduate of Eleanor Wesleyan and a soon-to-be graduate from U of I this coming May. I have 29 years of experience working with State Farm Insurance Companies. I currently work in the agency recruiting department as a agency career track manager. I've been a very active parent in District 87 for over 20 years, having two very busy sons who were involved with the band. They were also involved with athletics. I've had the opportunity to always serve in the classroom. I've been in leadership positions in the band program, and I've also been active volunteering in the community. I was elected to field a vacancy on the board in 2016, and then I was elected for a four-year term. I currently serve as the president of the District 87 School Board, and I also co-chair our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee alongside our Superintendent Dr. Barry Riley. I've been in this community, working hard, and I thought it would be just ideal to take my volunteerism to the next level and become a part of District 87 School Board. I have a passion for education and community service. Serving in leadership roles on the board for the last three years has really afforded me an opportunity to develop in this role, to build strong relationships, to really learn the internal and external workings of the district. My vision is to really to continue to work in this capacity, serving my community, the students and the parents that are a part of District 87. The goal is to continue to find ways to engage our parents, to build more community awareness of the great things that we have going on in our district, and also work with the leadership to ensure that all of our students are achieving at their very highest potential. I ask that you vote for me, Bridgette Gibson, for District 87 School Board.
We have a situation with our, our last candidate for District 87, Fitzgerald Sammons, has been desperately trying to overcome technical challenges, and he sends his great apologies. He was doing this while at work, and apparently there's been some problems with internet connections. while at work, and apparently there's been some problems with the internet connection there. So he emailed me a statement that he asked if I would just read on his behalf, and I want to try to, you know, I hate to penalize people when their technology fails, and as we've all been in there. So let me just, it's just a real short statement. So if you'll allow me, I will, um, read that for him. Um, Jeremy has this, Fitzgerald has sent this statement. "As a first-generation American Haitian, as an American veteran and as a trained technician working right here in Bloomington, I believe I bring to the table diversity that is needed on the District 87 School Board. Just like many others, I have youthful mistakes from my past, and I've chosen not to defeat me, but to allow for personal growth. The ability to overcome mistakes and gain maturity and wisdom is a fundamental part of education. I want to represent the working-class families who struggle to make an education a priority despite economic challenges. I understand the challenges these students, especially teenagers, face and want to help create educational environments that foster smart choices and strength of character. These families need to be heard in the decision-making process for our local schools. I want to be that voice. With that resolve, I confirm that I, I am in the race and look forward to earning the vote of citizens in District 87." Okay, so let, uh, let's move now with that done. Let me ask for, uh, those of you that are in attendance, as our attendees, uh, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in a little commercial plug, I guess, in a way. So to give time for and encourage those of you that are attending to use your Q and A button on your screen and type in a question that you might have. I did have a couple of questions that were emailed to me earlier and asked, can we please put these to the candidates? So, um, we'll do those. But first, I'd like to invite those of you that are attending this live to go ahead and submit your questions in the Q and A section at the bo- bottom of your screen. Uh, type those up, and then in a moment, we'll go over those. Um, I, this is being recorded, and it will be posted on our Facebook page, uh, for McLean County Republicans and on our website. In fact, we have a whole election page. This is the seventh Zoom, uh, candidate forum we've conducted. We've had one for the Normal Township, the Normal Town Council, the Normal Mayor, the Bloomington Alderman, and the Bloomington Mayor, um, as, and it took actually two of us, two times, to do the Normal Town Council because it's such a big group of people there. So, uh, all of those Zoom events are posted in recorded format on our, uh, webpage. So you can go to the election page, click on the forum, and be able to listen, just like you are doing live tonight. Uh, you can listen to all the different candidates from all the different races. We're truly trying to get voters some information to help them make a good educated decision when they go to the polls. That's what this is all about, and I'm grateful for these people to come tonight and share their hearts and their vision for serving our students. So, uh, let me go through, I, I have a question right now that I want to present and give to all the candidates, because it's applicable regardless of what district you're in. But I give a chance for all the candidates to, um, address the question of, can you identify what you see as the number one, and this is going to be the hard thing, just one, one thing that you believe has been a gr- strong accomplishment in your school district in the last year? Okay, give you a, a chance to think about that. Those of you that are attending, I told the panelists beforehand that if they, uh, when I ask a question, I'm gonna sh- look for a show of hands, and if someone has a hand raised, then I will call upon them to give that. And Katrica, you were the first one I saw. So Katrica, come to the microphone, please, and share us with you, with us what you think is, just one, I know there's lots, I'm su- I know.
I know, there's a lot.
But one thing that really strikes your heart as a, a good accomplishment in the past year.
I would say, honestly, I would say, um, when we were faced with this unexpected turn of events with the pandemic, um, just to see our educators, our parents, our community come together for our students, just to make sure our students have what they need to continue their education. It wasn't ideal, but you know, um, for the students, but, um, everyone was there. Um, I've seen, uh, schools come out to the parks and set up tents and, um, have students just come out to the tents and just let them know that they're there. Um, I was very proud of the, the work that the district did and the community coming together, um, for students as well.
Okay. Thank you, Katrica. I think Stan, I think you were next up with a hand. So please, share your thought.
Thanks. Yeah, along those same lines, I know, uh, all of us as parents, all of us as community members want to point to the one or two aspects that we got frustrated in when moving to remote. Um, but looking broadly at what was accomplished by the district's leadership and what was, what was, uh, taken on by the families and the parents and, and, and the, the childcare providers, to make sure that they are logging into the best of their ability, uh, to pivot so quickly, even if it wasn't ideal to everyone's personal preferences, uh, was a huge accomplishment. No other generation had, had a track record of doing that before, so that, uh, and I'm sure a lot of the, uh, current board members on the call from District 87 can speak to a lot of those challenges as well. Uh, just from a parent's standpoint, uh, I was, I don't think, uh, our current leadership gets enough credit in our current teachers pivoting, and along with the current parents who had to, uh, uh, adapt and remain flexible to all of the changing decisions. Looking at it as a positive is really a, a better way to say it than I wish this would have been a little different.
Wow, we're gonna stay on this positive train, and I think the next, uh, hand up was Bridget's. So Bridget, go ahead, please. Click, uh, a little unmute your microphone and there you are.
All right. You know, in the middle of the pandemic, um, and all the things that are going on in our district and District 87, I was really impressed with the commitment that District 87 maintained with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee that they started. It, it, it was a commitment that was made, um, continue that work through, through the pandemic. It includes community members, it includes educators, parents, a very diverse group. Um, still keeping at the forefront, because we are one of the most diverse districts in McLean County, the importance of diversity and making sure as a district that we are addressing the needs of all of the students in the district. I'm very proud of that effort, um, and it's, it's a journey, not a destination. We're still working through that process. Um, but I think it sends a strong message to our district, to our community, and to our parents that diversity is, is important. Um, and so I'm very, very proud of the work that our district is doing, doing there.
Thank you, Bridget. I think Elizabeth had her hand up next. So Elizabeth, please.
Thank you. Um, I am amazed on a daily basis with, um, the teachers that we have in our district and the, and the amount of pivoting that they were able to do. Um, and I felt like, you know, in order to get our kids back into the classroom, we were constantly, um, we had a plan and we executed on that plan, but it required them to constantly be pivot. And the grace with which, um, everyone has handled that continues to amaze me, and um, our kiddos are better for it. Um, I think everybody's looking forward to getting back into the classroom full-time, more normal, whatever our new normal is going to be, um, next year, but, um, and the amount of work that has gone into also planning the catch-up exercises that are going to occur over the summer. And again, you know, instead of teachers taking that time and resting and getting mentally prepared for the next school year, they're going to be committed uh, to doing those summer programs that we, it's the most robust summer programming that District 87 has laid out. Known to date, so, um, yeah, I, that just gets me really excited about the staff um, and all the support staff and everybody who just works in District 87 went above and beyond, I feel.
Okay. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Janelle, your hand was up, so please, share.
Sure. I would just like to say that I have been so impressed, not just with the adaptability um, that our educators have had in this, but the, the humble attitude that they've taken, because I know a whole bunch of them that were not prepared to be online teachers and did not feel prepared with the technology, and even weren't, a- as some of them are getting towards the end of their teaching career, certainly not jumping onto that bandwagon of having a lot of technology in the classroom to begin with. And not only did they humble themselves to try and learn how to do it, I heard teachers asking students over the remote for help when they were struggling and being willing to learn from their kids, but also figuring out how to build the essential relationships without ever meeting the kids face-to-face is a challenge that as an educator sounded terrifying, and I did, was fortunate that I didn't have to do it, and every teacher I know that has, I said, I don't know how you did this this year, but I am impressed with your ability to have connected with my kids through a screen. And I realize the kids are on screens all the time, but they tend to be focused in not really relationship building on that screen, and somehow these educators have stepped outside of their comfort zone and been able to do that. And so now, as kids are coming back to the classrooms, they do know their teacher already. So it's not like day one of school, and that's impressive.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Um, one of the questions that we have from one of our listeners is regards to money, which is always a tough one, especially with the education. So it's, uh, initially directed at Unit 5 candidates, but I think it can be broadened across to include District 87, because that's an issue districts face is dealing with budgets and dealing with financing and taxes, taxation rates. So the question is, unit, uh, initially though, is we'll go first to our Unit 5 candidates. Here's the question. "Unit 5 is faced with a deficit in our education fund. How would you propose handling this going forward?" So I don't know if anyone, I know your hand is up, but you might want to put it down and put it back up again. I don't know. I think you just had leftover.
No, I re- I re-raised my hand. I'm.
Okay, all right. But Janelle, you had your hand up, so.
Jeremy, I'm sorry. What did you need to say?
I actually wanted to comment briefly on the last question, if, if I could.
Oh, okay.
And not, not to, not to move us backwards, but I don't know, maybe you didn't, didn't see my, my hand up on that one, but, um, and, and I think Charles is, was doing the same, so.
Okay, well, we'll give you both guys a chance to deal with that one. It gives everybody else a chance to think longer about the hard question, right?
Perfect.
Go ahead.
I apologize for that. Uh, really, the thing I wanted to say a positive from this past year that, that I thought was, was, uh, was inspiring and, and good to see was, um, the students. Um, I know people have talked about the administrators, teachers, and, and I agree what the teachers have done has been nothing short of heroic with the switching from remote to hybrid, uh, and, you know, back and forth, just some of those changes and the challenges they've had. But really, I think the, the, the folks that deserve the greatest, uh, attention or recognition as the students. Um, they're, you know, they've been used to, they, they've known nothing different than going to school. And for them to stay at home, um, you know, and I've said this all along, I mean, for my ch- my kids, I, you know, I look at my two, they're in high school, and they basically during the week, they spend sixteen, eighteen hours in the room. Um, you know, sleeping and taking classes, and for, for kids to do that, um, you know, that don't have the social interaction that they're used to, that was a huge, huge challenge. And, and I know some of the students have, have excelled in the remote hybrid environment, which is great for them, and some of them have really struggled. But all in all, I think in general, I think for the students to be able to, um, you know, it was a crazy world for everybody, but for kids, the unknown. You know, as adults, we, we, I think we, we lived through a little bit more. For students, when this first happened, they had no idea what was going on, and, and for them to be able to to persevere and to continue to get the education that they have managed to receive over this past year is, is, it's, it's inspiring. Thank you.
Unmute myself. Um, Charles, you had a comment to make, and I do see we have got a little technical difficulty with Erica, and I'm working on it behind the scenes. So, but let me go ahead and let Charles, uh, share his, uh, thoughts on a positive, um, experience this last year.
I, I wanted to comment on that question. I, I think all the comments that everybody has been, had been right on. I guess, what, the one that I, uh, wanted to cite for District 87, and this also applies to Unit 5 too, is the effort, uh, that our staff made in feeding our students. Uh, we have a district where we've got, you know, sixty percent, uh, close to sixty percent that are, uh, receiving free and reduced meals. And one of the highlights has been the fact that we've been able to get meals out to the students, uh, all year long, uh, when they've been at home, and this is continuing, and it will continue this summer too. And, uh, so I really wanted to highlight that and the efforts of all the people that, uh, work behind the scenes in our, uh, kitchens and with our bus drivers, getting, getting everything distributed. So, thank you.
Unmute again. All right, I'm, well, I'm gonna, um, invite, if Erica had a comment, she was had, we, sometimes gremlins get in the system, don't they, in technology, and people just like disappear all of a sudden. Erica, bless your heart. It happened, but you're back. So if you have a, a comment you'd like to make about the, uh, something you consider a good thing that happened in the school district this last year, please, go ahead and share.
I would really like to commend the students and the teachers. Um, I know at my son's school, they did a phenomenal job with just keeping in contact with the students, making sure that their socially, social, emotional, um, um, state of mind was intact. So I, um, I really commend the teachers and the students, because the students had never been faced with this. And so they, they were having a tough time, and I know I have speak, spoke to a lot of different students, my son's friends, and it was just, even my son was, was, was struggling, um, mentally, because being at home every day, all day, you know, and, and, and learning something different, but I, I have to say that he excelled. So, um, I would give a huge shout out to the teachers to the, um, because they, they did a phenomenal job. They did a phenomenal job with just keeping in contact with students when they seen different things in them that they, they honed in right, right away. If they seen something like they wasn't, um, that they were falling off during a lesson, then they would, they would contact me. They would contact the parents and let us know, hey, something's going on and we need to sit down and, and have a chat. So I think that that was great, that they were doing like different bingo games to try to keep them engaged every single week. So I think that was phenomenal. The teachers did a phenomenal job.
Very good. Thank you for that. Now, we're gonna move to a little bit tougher question, uh, that was presented back, back to the idea of Unit 5 candidates, you're gonna have first shot at it, is talking about the deficit in the education fund and how you would propose handling this going forward. So I need you to have, you know, raise, push, you know, hit the little raise hand button on your screen. Janelle, your hand is up, so if you would, go ahead. What's your, what's your thoughts on this question?
Sure. Um, as I mentioned in the beginning, that's the one, that's one of the primaries that I think needs focus. So that is something I've given some thought to. While there are a number of small things as far as the budget goes that could be looked at to maybe save some money, uh, but continually looking at transportation services and possibly changing where home bases are for certain other services being offered in the district, the most honest answer that any of us can really give is if we don't want to make deep cuts in Unit 5, our referendum is in the future. And it's, it, it's the ugly reality that people don't want to talk about, but I think it's the most honest answer I can give to the voters is that we're gonna get to a point where we either need to pass a referendum to allow for m- more funds to come into the school, or cuts will have to be made to take things that we don't want to lose out. And I'm hopeful that given the generous nature of our community and the loving nature of the community that we are a part of, that when they come to understand, here's where the dollars and cents are at, and here's how fiscally responsible this district has been and how long they have gone without having any sort of an increase that they will understand that that's the most appropriate action so that we can continue to offer the great services that Unit 5 has been offering.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Katrica, you have your hand up, please. Share your thoughts.
Thank you, Connie. Um, no, I, I really, um, I agree with, um, Janelle. Um, I know the finance, the financial, um, state of the district is gonna be very, very, very complex, but I know that my goal will be to ensure that we, um, really ensure that our community dollars, um, um, are leveraged well, um, ensuring that it supports the educational goals and priorities and meets the needs of all the students and the operational costs of the district. Um, like I said, it is complex. Um, one of the thoughts, though, that I had was looking for ways to generate, you know, revenue through grants, um, or assets that we have currently, are leveraging, um, community partnerships, um, as well, our community, you know, donations. Again, it's, it's definitely gonna take a lot. Um, one thing I do commit to, though, um, uh, as a, as a, as, as a new, uh, candidate and if elected, um, uh, as a, as a, as, as a new candidate and if elected a new board member, I do commit that the first thing that I will do within that first ninety days is make sure I sit down and, um, with our financial expert in the district and have them, him or her walk us through, um, what the, the budget and, um, uh, what that looks like and how the monies are aligned. So that will prepare me to be effective, um, in making key decisions there about our community dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Stan, I think you were next in line with a hand up. So please.
Yeah, similar to Catruga, this would be, uh, the first time joining the board for me if I were elected. Uh, first thing I'd want to do immediately is, is leverage my financial background and work with the financial team in the district to clearly understand, uh, what's at stake. We have an outsider's perspective, or at least I'll speak for myself, I do, uh, from what I can read and communicate with. Uh, but I want to dive in, understand the numbers. Um, housing market is strong and that is a good sign for the area. I'd like to do some short-term projections to see, uh, where, uh, the level revenues are compared to maybe just a year ago as well. Uh, see where we're headed. Um, and then start to do the cost benefit analysis of, all right, if we still are projecting that deficit in the near future, um, here's what that would mean to the community. Um, I see a lot of our role being more as, as communicators of, uh, this is what we've come to accept, uh, as the level of quality for our education. And here's what it would mean, uh, to Janelle's point, if we do, uh, turn the page and move toward a referendum, uh, which may be in the future. Uh, we need to clearly state why. We need to be able to lay it out and say, you know, there may be an A option, a B option, a C option, a D option, or a little bit of all. Um, and this is what that would mean to the education for your children. Really, the, the communication aspect is, is the key part in that entire, um, strategy.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Erica, I think you were next.
I, I agree one hundred percent, um, that we, um, as the, in the event that, uh, that the financial situation becomes more dire. I would love, um, that not to have to sacrifice any of our programs for our kids because different programs that we have in the, in unit five do different things for, for the students. They, whether it's extracurriculum or whether it's a part of our, our, our regular, um, curriculum. It is something that we need to, uh, come up with creative ideas for fundraising. We need to, um, create more revenue for, um, maybe reach out to the different companies in the community, Home Depot, um, Lowe's, you have many communities. I mean, many companies in the community that would be willing to help if they knew what the situation is, but we have to be transparent. We have to be transparent with the parents. We have to be transparent with the community and let them know where we are and what this means in, 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 in the future for our children and for their education and what we would have to cut and why we would have to cut it. Um, if parents don't know, I believe that many parents in this community work for different companies that will be willing to help. Um, but if they don't know, then they can't help, you know, and if we don't, if we are not transparent in, in, in saying that these are the reasons why we need to cut these programs, then we're going to have parents, um, saying that we didn't tell them what was going on. And if we don't tell them, then how do we expect for them to help us? Um, this is a, 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 a great community. This is, this is a great school system. And I believe that if we work together, we can combat the deficit. I believe that we can do it. So that would be my first, um, couple of months is getting in with the budget and trying to figure out where we, where we are because we would all be new to this. So because we will all be new to this, we will have to sit down and really, really, um, get some education on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jeremy, as a last of the unit five candidates, I'm gonna give you a moment to say your thoughts on this and then district eighty seven candidates are off the hook. I, I would like to, you know, kind of slightly vary the question on the same issue of finances. And we'll go to the district eighty seven candidates and talk about what they view as issues that district eighty seven face financially. But first I'll finish up with unit five. Jeremy?
Well, first I'm going to apologize. It took you a minute to figure out how to raise my hand. I was raising my hand. So I, it took me a minute. I apologize for that. Uh, I, I don't do a lot of Zoom calls. Um, so, uh, I apologize. That was my, my confusion on the first question. Uh, yeah, financing is going to be a big issue. Um, as I said earlier, our state budget, uh, is not in good health. I don't, it, it's not, I don't see that being fixed anytime soon. So the school districts, um, are going to really have to figure out a way to, to make it work with what they've gotten, maybe less. Um, like other folks have said already is I've got to get in and get my, my hands dirty, if you will. I've got to, you know, dive into, to the budget and learn about it. Uh, and really what I want to do is a number of things. I want to look at, are there things that we could potentially do to increase efficiencies, to cut costs? Are there things that, you know, I, my guess is there's not a significant amount of low hanging fruit, if you will, but we got to look for it. Um, and, and see if there are things there. And then secondarily, going back to what I said before is, um, focus on the students. Are there things that the district is spending money on right now that maybe we don't need to? Or maybe we need to reduce the amount we're spending. If it's not focusing on educating the students of the unified school district, we need to figure out a way to, to do something different. And then this goes to, again, I, I agree with Erica and this is a thought I had is, is look for outside sources. Um, are there corporations? Are there grants? Are there federal grants? Are there different things that, that the school district can do to try to raise funds? Um, there's, there's going to be ways now. Is that going to be, you know, millions of dollars? Potentially not, but you know, every little bit helps. I, I look at what we had from, from the, uh, Rivian and, and the other companies escaping me right now. Uh, donated a million dollars to the school district recently for the testing. There, there's companies that are willing to help. Um, so I think you got to look at those, those things first. And then lastly, if, if push comes to shove and you know, you, you've turned over every stone there is looking for the, you know, the, the cost savings. You've eliminated all wasteful programs and, and focus on the students. You've looked for outside support. Yeah, eventually you, you're, you, you may have to come up with, you know, go to a referendum and see what you can do to, to, you know, see what the community thoughts are of whether, you know, you, you start making deep cuts or in, increase taxes. But again, I think that's a last resort. I think that's, um, something that I, I, I would hope that we wouldn't need to get to. I think you just really need to, to do a deep dive into the, what the, the money's being spent on right now and find ways to cut it. I think is the, the first and foremost. And again, that's going to take us, as I, I'm not sure who said it on the group. None of us have been on the school board. And so we've got some work to do. Um, whoever is elected in this role, they've got a lot of work to do. And the other thing is that there's seven people on the board. So it's going to take some collaboration, working with other folks. It, it's going to take some effort to get this done. Um, this is a, whoever's fortunate enough to be elected, they've got some work to do. So, um, but, uh, it, it, it needs to be done. It has to be done.
All right. Thank you. Let's shift over to district eighty seven. Um, I'm going to let those guys raise their hand if they feel they're ready to address the issues of finances there. Elizabeth, I think your hand was up first. So please go ahead.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah. So, uh, district eighty seven, I feel has, has done a pretty good job in, uh, managing our money. And in fact, uh, last year we refinanced, um, several of our bonds and got lower interest rates, which eliminated, um, a, a lot of the debt that we were incurring. Um, and and it is interesting because you can only spend money with the education fund for educational, the things that are stipulated by education law for education fund. There's things in the tort, tort budget that you can only spend on tort. And then there's also life, life, health, safety. Um, so when you do get money, uh, it, it's only specific money for different things and, uh, you, you really do have to pay attention to, uh, where you're going to spend your money and how you're going to spend your money for those particular things. Which does make it a little tricky sometimes. Um, and, uh, uh, I do know that district eighty seven does a fantastic job of reaching out and establishing partnerships with, um, organizations in town, but also, uh, applying for the federal grants that allow, um, our Sarah Raymond School to, uh, function at a high level that it does. In fact, I, one day I would love to be able to see preschool for all within district eighty seven. Um, if we could obtain the funding for it because what we, we know that, uh, the earlier you get those kids into school, the greater their qual, their success rate as adults are going to be. Um, so, um, I'm proud of the, the management of the budget that district eighty seven has done. We can always do, you know, can you always do better? Of course. Um, but I'm, I'm very proud of where we are right now, um, in terms of our budget that we've passed.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. I'm going to let, Bridget Scott has her hand up. So Bridget, please.
Thank you. Um, spending tax dollars wisely is always important. And really the primary focus as we're making decisions as board members, as we're planning things for the next year. And as Elizabeth just stated, district eighty seven issued just, uh, last year fifteen million dollars in working cash bond. The goal with that was pre-planning, um, to lessen the financial barriers that were coming as a result of COVID nineteen pandemic. And then of some other gaps that we, we had, it definitely lessened the burden there. We've also, um, have received some federal funding this year, um, to support a lot of the spending that did occur unexpectedly due to COVID nineteen. Um, so, uh, we haven't dug in a, a lot yet this year to start talking about budget planning for next year because the budget work happens the year prior to the school year. But we'll soon be in very deep conversations about that, looking closely, um, at our budget, looking at the line items, asking great questions as a board, doing our research to ensure that as board members, we are being fiscally responsible.
Okay, thank you. I don't know whether Charles had any comments that he wanted.
I still haven't figured out how to raise my hand yet, so.
Well, sir, go right ahead. I saw the hand go up. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I, I would echo the comments from Bridget and Elizabeth. Uh, one other thing that I think that's important that we need to recognize as board members is we've got a problem with the state of Illinois and they did it again to us just recently in terms of passing legislation. Uh, with the, uh, new, uh, House bill twenty one seventy, uh, had a lot of graduation requirements. We've got a situation where the state is still mandating, uh, things for the schools and not providing any finances. The example here is, uh, two years of foreign language, which is sounds great. But the problem is we got a shortage of teachers. Uh, it's hard to get foreign language teachers. But they go ahead and they pass the legislation and then, then of course they don't provide the funding for that. And I think as board members, we need to make sure that the public is aware of that. We need to keep putting pressure on our state legislators, uh, so that they understand that, uh, that they can't keep doing that because uh, that's part of the problem. We got a new, uh, system in the state of Illinois for financing schools. And of course, now they're talking, they're supposed to kick in so many millions of dollars every year of new money. And that's disappeared. And we're going to be right back in the same situation we were many years ago where funding is not keeping up. We are not getting the money that we're supposed to be getting from the state. Uh, they allocate money for transportation. And we're lucky if we get seventy percent or sixty percent of what we're supposed to get. And, uh, so it's important that we keep, keep this in the forefront, uh, so the public's aware of this and that the state is a little more, uh, they recognize that they've got to put an end to, uh, adding mandates all the time and not providing the funds for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to throw out one more question for everyone as we start to wrap up, uh, head toward the end today. Um, a question for one of our listeners that is probably fraught with a little bit of emotion maybe, but I'm hopeful that you guys can work through this because I, I suspect it's a question that you've heard on various occasions. And that's the idea of merging district eighty seven with unit five. So if you have a, a desire to speak to that or a thought on that issue, I'll ask you to raise your hand and we'll talk about this concept of our, our idea of, uh, merging the two school districts. Anyone, anyone a taker on that? Okay, Janelle, please go right ahead.
I don't mind starting us off. I don't know that I have a real good solution. I just, I have asked the question myself. And having only moved here back in two thousand and seven, I thought it seemed very odd what our district lines were. So I asked and said, inquiring minds want to know, why would we have this donut hole shaped district surrounded by this other one? And the history that I was given is that it came down to ideals of the initially normal versus Bloomington and that Bloomington early on did not want to take on the transportation to a lot of the outlying areas. And if you go back far enough, a lot of these small towns that are a part of unit five were their own school district at one point. And small school districts really struggle financially, uh, especially as time has gone further. And as Charles pointed out, with all the mandates from the state that are out there and the, the smaller you are, the harder it is to spread those resources around and it becomes easier to merge together. And so unit five really got built off of that. Um, so while that isn't the direct answer that the listener was asking for, that is the history behind it. And now we've come to this point where we do have two large districts with two, not completely opposite, but two different philosophies and two different sets of goals. So kind of like people talk a lot about, would we merge Bloomington Normal into one town? And could you now have one big city council? I think that you've got a lot of different ideals at play. And to sit down and try and do that is going to be a very large task. And I'm not sure that that's an easy one to get done. Or if in the end we could even manage to make a good merge for both of the cities that are behind those two districts. But I, I, I wouldn't say, no, we're completely against it. I just think that as a, a, a small group of people trying to say, sure, we're going to do this. It's a much bigger question than that with a lot more history to it.
Okay, thank you, Janelle. Jeremy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did. And first I want to touch on, I know there's, uh, some legislation. I don't know the exact details. I, I briefly scanned, scanned an article the other day and I got interrupted while I was trying to read it about consolidating school, uh, school districts right now. Uh, through the state that is, is working on being passed. And, and I think it's, it's a creative approach. Yeah, there are a lot of differences between the, the, the two districts right now, unit five and district eighty seven. It would not be something that would be simple to do, but it's certainly something, again, looking at ways to make sure that, you know, both school district are focused on educating students. You know, pure and simple. That's the role of both school districts. So yeah, there are challenges. There are things that would make it very difficult to do. But I think it's, it's certainly something that, that I would be open to the concept of it. You know, even looking at, at some basic, uh, you know, things that could be potentially merged, whether that's, you know, even if it's human resource functions or those types of things. I mean, again, I know these are, there's people's jobs on the line and there's a lot involved with doing something like this. But again, looking at our options of, do we start to cut programs at the school district? Do we continue raising taxes or do we raise taxes? Or do we look at an alternative of maybe trying to figure out how we can do some consolidation with other school districts? And obviously the, the unified district eighty seven makes sense. Um, I, I think it's something that, that certainly should be on the table to be explored.
Okay, thank you. Catruga, you had your hand up, please. What do you think?
Thank you. Um, and I will be transparent. I haven't, you know, I had not thought about, uh, merging, but, um, as I think, I think it's such a great question. Um, when I do think about it, just thinking about, um, you know, why families move into a district, uh, why they buy a home into a district. I do believe we will have to, you know, if this is something that we would need to entertain, definitely have to consider, um, community, strong community, um, input and buy, and buy-in, um, uh, to that idea. Um, I am at a, um, I do mentor at a, uh, local organization that serves, um, both students, both students from both districts, eight, district eighty seven and, uh, uh, unit five as well. And when we're pulling together, um, and trying to work with staff, um, we do have to, um, try to understand the differences between approach at district, at unit, um, at district eighty seven versus unit five. So sometimes there are some complexities when we're trying to serve, um, the students collectively. Um, but again, when I think about, um, merging, I definitely think that we definitely have to get the parents, communities involved. Um, I do think that there will be pros and cons and we would have to weigh those and really come up with, um, some collective options there, um, to share it out, to, to share collectively with our community.
Okay, thank you. Stan, your hand was up?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I would say you never say never. Um, you always want to leave the opportunity on the table. Uh, that's not to say that, that, that's my first, second, third, maybe even hundredth, uh, priority for, uh, the current district. I, I would be open, uh, to assembling a panel if there was enough community interest on both sides. Uh, that really wanted to, um, address this as a potential solution. Um, I'd be willing to, to stand up a panel. Um, I'm definitely looking for historians in the community. Uh, those with deep passions on both sides. looking for historians in the community, uh those with deep passions on both sides to make sure that uh there's mutual satisfaction. I know you 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 don't want one party to be taking advantage of the other or to feel like they're being left out of the conversation entirely. Um, those aren't easy. Um, a lot of uh contractual obligations as well would would need to come into consideration. And certainly the employee unions, teachers' unions, other uh employees in the in the districts. And then also considering what are the programs uh for our students? How is this going to affect them? We merge. Does that make their student experience better, worse, or somewhere in between? So uh you need to sort of project all of those before you even begin to entertain the actual conversations of how this will look logistically.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Erica, your hand is up?
I agree. I I um, I don't um know that this would be um, I don't know that this shouldn't be taken off the table. I believe that it's something that we need to research, look into, um maybe survey with the parents, um even with the students. I I believe that every decision that we make, we have to look at the students. We have to ask them the questions. We have to sit down with them and see how they feel about it um and their parents and their families because again, this is one big community. Um, and people that live in in Bloomington, in the Bloomington community and people that live in a normal community, they all come together collectively. So if we don't get their input and and before we make this huge decision that will put them in a different space, that will put them in a different place, then what are we saying? That they're not a that they're not allowed to be in on the um, the questions and the answers that we that we need in 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 the situations? So I I believe that we we definitely need to to, it's definitely something that needs to be brought to the table, but it's definitely something that needs to be surveyed with every all stakeholders. We can't leave anyone out because this is a huge decision decision for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Bridget, your hand was up?
I would just um kind of echo the comments that were made. Um, in order to make a decision so so grand, so big, you would be the the pleasure of the community and the desires of the community. But one thing I do know, um District eighty-seven has a a a deep history, a strong history as well as Unit Five, you know? I think there's some very healthy rivalries that that happen that creates community in our district. And I believe that no matter where you are, either if you're in Bloomington or if you're in Normal, you're going to get a a good education. And I've got two students who grew up in uh District eighty-seven. They went to Washington School, Bloomington Junior High and the high school. They have friends in Normal that they are just as close to um friends that they played basketball with uh as early as elementary school that they continue, you know, to play against each other. That was very good, strong, healthy relationships. And so my opinion is um unless Bloomington and Normal becomes one city, I I don't see um us merging our school district and also unless the community, if that's something that the community would want. I think there's very positive things about having two strong districts in the Bloomington Normal community.
Okay, thank you. And Elizabeth?
Well, I just want to echo what Bridget has said too. And um, just as a little antidote, so District eighty-seven and Unit Five actually co-op for lacrosse. And the logistics that we went through for just getting lacrosse team members to be able to play as one, one team um was huge. So I can only imagine the amount of logistics that would be required to combine two districts. I would um maybe Stan and his number crunching, but um I I would, I would really have to be sold on how the how it will play out monetarily um before I would even consider taking it to the public to um see how they feel about it because I just think we are such two huge districts with two different financial strategies that um uh i- it'll be a huge undertaking. So best of luck whoever wants to do that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the comment. And I don't know, Charles, did you want to add something to that mix with the right uh, were you would or not?
Well, I don't know if I want to get in this mix or not, but uh I'll I'll just make a couple comments. Uh, the the consolidation that's going on right now in the state, a lot of that is just with little elementary districts that they're trying to bring into high school districts. It's a whole nother ballgame when you bring it, bring in two unit districts. Uh, just one, one example would be the uh, the debt. Now, there was a time when the state was pushing consolidation and they would get districts to consolidate and they would pick up the debt so that the district was starting out fresh. And I don't think that's going to happen right now. And that's going to be a big stumbling block to any type of consolidation uh down the road. But uh, but again, I get never say never. Uh, but uh, right now I don't see that happening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna shift into a final word moment and we're doing the reverse order of what we started. So we're gonna ask, allow each of our candidates to have a minute. I I won't set a timer and already, you know, pull the hook on you if you if you go past the minute, but I I'm sure you'll do well, sticking close as you can. We try to wrap this up in less than an hour and a half, just for the sake of viewers. So uh, to that point, let me start with uh asking uh Erica to come to the mic and just share with any parting comments she has to share.
Thank you again for having us tonight. I really, really appreciate it. It it has been very enlightening tonight to learn some different things about District eighty-seven that I didn't know. Um, again, I am running because I believe in public education. I understand the urgency in getting our students back to school safely. I understand the need for diversity, equity and inclusion in our district amongst our staff and our students um to amongst our staff so that they represent our students. I commit to supporting all stakeholders and I am um and by setting policies that benefit all the students, staffs and families. The school board sets the vision and the goals um for the school district and they and and they should be held accountable. Um, I want to advocate and help to ensure that Unit Five meets the community's expectations so that all students can be successfully, can be successful academically. Um, I I love to serve in this community. I have uh been here for a couple of years and just serving while I've been here. So I just want to be a part of this great Unit Five to serve the students.
Thank you. And we move on now to uh Stan, next in line.
Yeah. All right. And thank you, Connie, and thank you to your party for for hosting this uh for the awareness for the community uh to be able to really, I like to announce it at the top of the hour, uh putting a face to the names you're going to see and getting to know us. Um, some of us won't be seated, some of us will, but you know, we're all still going to be uh supporters and fans of the students in our district and we were all gonna um look for the success and hope for the success. Uh, for me and everything I do, I challenge myself to leave it better than I received it. Uh, and with your support at at the ballots, uh, I can embody the sentiment on the board and strive to achieve, achieve recognizable progress for our children. Uh, my my wife is a teacher and uh one day she had one of her favorite authors come to the school and and give a speech and she had a T-shirt um with a saying, a quote from that author. And and the quote read, "All children have gifts, some open them at different times." And several years back, when I read that, I said, that's a good quote. Uh, now viewing it uh as a father and knowing through what we're going through with our oldest son, trying to a daily basis to get him to um realize uh the tremendous gifts that he does have as a person, as a student. Um, and doing everything we can to recognize those and open those gifts and introduce them to the world. Um, really, that's what it's about. That that's what the school districts are here for. And why I'm running is is hopefully to put the appropriate supports and structures in place so that all students uh have the resources and the people in their lives uh when when on the school grounds uh to be able to identify what their gifts are and open them up hopefully before graduation, before they uh move on to serve our community as adults. Thank you for the time. Uh, thank you today. Uh, getting to know me as a person, as a father, as a candidate, getting to know all of us, greatly appreciated for the opportunity tonight. Thank you. And I look forward to uh everyone watching this uh voting honor before April sixth.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, now we have Janelle next in line. Janelle?
Yes. Uh, thank you to all the viewers for taking the time to listen and to really try and get to know each of the candidates this evening. It's important to be an educated and informed voter, so I appreciate the time that you're putting in by doing this. I I personally believe the public education is the cornerstone of any community. And although it sounds like a cheesy eighties song, it's mostly because the children really are our future. And I hope to be a part of the Unit Five School Board to help shape the future of that school board. Um, I'd like to encourage everyone that is listening to get out and vote honor before April sixth so that your opinions really do play a role in the decision-making factor as well. But also to encourage you that if you are walking away from here and you still have questions, please feel free to reach out and ask those questions if they didn't get answered of you tonight. I will speak for myself, but also say that most of us have a social media contact. So you can find me at Janelle Sapar for Unit Five to uh, excuse me, Janelle Sapar from McLean County Unit Five School Board uh on Facebook and there's an email address that's abbreviated in there that's easy to get me through. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions to help you feel more comfortable with the vote that you're getting ready to cast. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Janelle. And now Jeremy, please.
Yeah, first and foremost, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I enjoyed uh getting the chance to to talk to people and it's as as I've gone through this process of running for a school board, that's uh I I enjoy this. I love get hearing the questions, getting the chance to hear what the other candidates have to say. It's been a, it's been a good process. And like I said, we're we're winding down. We got a week to go. So it's, I appreciate uh getting the opportunity to chat with folks that have participated this evening. As as I said early on, my my platform is pretty simple. Students first. I'm going to focus everything that I do if I'm if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the school board is going to be focused on the students. And and that's, that's again, like I said before, you know, I repeat myself a little bit here, but they what that's the sole role of the school district is to educate the students. So I want to make sure that that's what they're focused on. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of challenges ahead. There's challenges now and there's and there there are going to be more challenges ahead, you know, fiscally. Um, I think financially that with the pandemic continuing and potential issues associated with that, I feel like I have the background and the resources to be able to help work through those things. And they're going to be difficult decisions, but uh, you know, working together as a team, collaborating with the other board members is something that I'm going to be able to do to make sure that we continue to provide the excellent education that Unit Five does and continue to focus on the students. So like everybody else here, I have a Facebook page, Jeremy D. Hi, you'll find me there. I'd love to hear from folks too. Like I've said uh all along, I I've reached out to and and heard from a number of students, teachers, parents, um people that don't just taxpayers and don't have any kids in the school district. I've talked to a lot of folks because that's what I want to continue to do. I'm I'm here to serve uh the community and and want to continue to do that. So I'd love to hear from you if you have any questions for me. Um, and then lastly, um, I, you know, I'd love to get your support and uh have you vote for me honor before Tuesday. It's uh, we're we're close enough now that we're a week away. So looking forward to it. So thanks so much for the time.
Thank you, Jeremy. And last of our Unit Five, but then we'll move on to District eighty-seven. So about uh, Katrika, please come to the mic.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I echo all of the candidates. Thank you so much for being here. I have enjoyed the dialogue and the questions tonight. I would love, again, to continue to connect and collaborate more. Um, uh, like I said, um engagement, strengthening engagement, ensuring equity for all students and supporting educational excellence will continue to be my focus. Um, supporting and helping students achieve their goals. Um, his is so important and has been important to me and my family. Uh, my husband has served as substitute teacher and mentor for District eighty-seven and Unit Five. So and and the organizations that I've served are example of my commitment to this community. Um, as I mentioned, I partner with um, I issued established tutors for students. We serve across District eighty-seven and Unit Five um at the Jewels Foundation. I've done that over the past three years. Um, I serve as a teen sponsor for service organizations and I teach um uh Sunday School for um and I'm a worship leader for um a local church in our community for kindergarten and first grade. Um, so I am really committed um about supporting and advocating for the needs of our students. I'm committed and passionate about serving in this community. So um, I really um would appreciate your support. I asked for your vote honor before April um the sixth. And again, if you want to reach out to me, um, I can be found as uh my other candidate uh friends here um on Facebook, um at Katrika Coleman for Unit Five. Um, you can also email me at Colemanforunitfive@gmail.com. But thank you again. Um, it was a pleasure being here this evening.
Thank you very much. And we're gonna move on to Unit uh District eighty-seven. Um, and I poor uh Miss Fitzgerald Samity, he's been attempting and still facing technical difficulties, but he missed sent me a um, a very short message that he asked I just share as a parting word. And so I'll have, I'll read his and then we'll move on to allowing Bridget and then Elizabeth and then Charles to close out on our District eighty-seven. So this message from Fitzgerald Samity. "I apologize for the technical difficulties, allow not allowing me to be appearing in person. I am committed to represent the students and families of the of to the best of my ability and I will value every vote on my behalf from the families of District eighty-seven," Fitzgerald Samity. Okay, so now we'll move on to uh Bridget. Would you please come and share your thoughts?
I would like to also thank the committee that put this forum together. Thank you so much, Connie, for your communications and all your efforts. Um, I've just been very blessed and humbled to serve on the District eighty-seven School Board um for the last four years. And I would, I'm seeking reelection because I am very committed to this community. I love working and serving um the ability to have impact in the students' lives, the families' lives, and working with the educators has just been invaluable. And I would love your support to be able to continue those efforts. Um, and I also would like to just wish um all the candidates that are on the journey to school board members this year well. Um, best of luck uh to all of you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Elizabeth.
Well, again, thank you, Connie, and thank you, everybody, for attending tonight and to listen to what we have to say. Um, I also want to echo, um, it's an honor to represent District eighty-seven um and being able to see everything that occurs in our district fills me with joy. Um, it's amazing to see what the little people, well, that's a little, not all of them, but anyway, all all the kiddos do. Um, and the adults that they are going to become um is is really amazing. Um, I want to continue to be a listening ear uh for anybody who has anything that they would like to talk about. And continue to be an advocate for all students in District eighty-seven, uh even those who don't feel like their voice can be heard at the table. Uh, I want to give them a voice. Um, I want to continue to be um a communicator uh and a collaborator, um continue the excellent working relationship that we have as a District eighty-seven School Board. Um, it is an honor to serve with uh everybody who uh serves on District eighty-seven's School Board um and work with our fantastic administration. Um, and just uh end with a quick paraphrase from Stephen Covey. "I want to be a light, not a judge. I want to be a model, not a critic, and be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem." Good luck to everybody who is uh running to be a board member.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And Charles, you are wrapping us up tonight, so please come to the mic.
Okay, I guess I'll wrap up, although I I think Elizabeth's quote probably was it was a good wrap up. Uh, again, it is an honor to serve on the board and uh to serve the students of District eighty-seven. And uh, I welcome the privilege to continue to do that for another four years. Uh, we got a couple of big issues before. We got students returning uh to in-person learning. Uh, we know that some of those students have uh lost some of their skills over the over the past year. So we need to come up with programs to address that. Uh, with my background, I feel that I can help uh uh in that uh process. If again, as was mentioned, probably the most important decision that the board makes is the hiring of a superintendent. And of course, we're going to be replacing uh Dr. Riley. And uh, I feel that with my background, my educational background and my experience, uh having been through this before, that I have some uh um experience that I could offer to the other other board members uh in in helping us to reach and uh decide on the person that uh will be filling those shoes. And then I I guess my last comment is that uh again, I don't have children in District eighty-seven. But I am an educator and I feel that you got to remember there's sixty, probably sixty percent of the households out in the community that do not have any contact But I am an educator and I feel that you got to remember there's sixty, probably sixty percent of the households out in the community that do not have any contact with the schools. And I speak for all the children. I represent them, but I feel that I also represent those people, the people that are retired. People that do not have contact with the schools and um. I I guess I view my candidacy as being an advocate for them, keeping them informed as to what's going on in the schools. Uh, down the road, we're gonna have to go to them maybe for referendum, get their support. They need to know what's going on. We need to get them into the schools. And uh, keep them involved and keep them aware of what the financial needs of the district are. And uh, so I welcome that opportunity to continue to do that. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Connie, and to speak to the voters. And uh. I know that uh, we would welcome your support uh, for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles, and thank you all, all of the candidates for your participation. Uh, hopefully this will prove to be informative beyond just even tonight. The recording will be posted, as I said, on our uh, website and Facebook page. I'll be emailing a link. To the recording to all the candidates so they can share at their discretion. Uh, we have a whole, whole page on our website, McLean County Republicans dot O R G dedicated to the election. So we encourage voters to be informed. This is all, this has been the reason for our doing these series of Zoom forums uh, all along. Is to just help voters to be informed, to be engaged. Um, I personally believe that the April sixth consolidated elections are far more important and have far more impact on our day-to-day life. Than even the elections that we put so much focus on in November. So um, we're encouraging people to get out and vote. So thank you for being here tonight. Thank you again to all of our panelists and I will bid you all a good night.